If we could rise and salute the flag. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for all. Thank you. The Revere Zoning Board of Appeals will now come to order. Row call. Mr. Bacioli is absent. Mr. D'Angelo is absent. Mr. Lopes, present. Mr. Mazzoni, present. Mr. Pelton, present. Mr. Tucker, present. Quorum is present. For the edification of the audience and viewing public, where we have two members not here, we will offer the motion to continue after we conduct the public hearing. Our next meeting will be April 24th at 4:00 p.m. And I'll explain why we are going to suggest a continuance. With two members being absent, you would be required to get a unanimous vote. So if one person was to deny, the motion would be to deny and it would be killed. So I suggest that you allow the presentations. We will open it up for the public hearings and then, at the very end, your applicant or counsel could ask for a continuance till next month. Our first calendar item number?
The first application before the board is Application A1902. This is a special permit application, continued from the meeting of January 23rd, 2019. The application of Andrea Bennett, 19 Francisco Drive Lynn, requesting a special permit to enable the appellant to further alter and extend a non-conforming two-family structure at 46 Arcadia Street by constructing a seven-foot by 24-foot exterior deck, five-foot by 17-foot rear stairs and a second-story addition at 46 Arcadia Street Revere.
Is the applicant present? Just for the edification of the public also, this was continued so that the building inspector could answer the questions as far as if he felt this could be a two-family unit and have the appropriate parking, and he did reply that he has no issues with that, along with the site plan review. If you could press that microphone, just state your name and address for the record.
It's John Andrews.
Okay. Could you spell your name just for the clerk here, please?
Yep. And so also with the client.
And your address, please.
81 Burpee Road, Swampscott, Massachusetts.
Okay, so basically you presented everything. We had that question. Did you have to do a plan over or no? The plan was fine?
Yeah, the plan was fine and I know you and I had talked. Mrs. Bennett here went down and spoke with the building inspector. She brought the appropriate paperwork, the tax records, and he did say that it was a two-family. That wasn't just a studio, it was a full two-family home.
So this was the question that in the jacket it showed three different permits, but the certificate of occupancy that was in there did claim that it was a two-family unit. Okay, I have to open up the hearing to any proponents. Hearing not all closed that side of the hearing, any opponents? Hearing not all closed that side of the hearing. Again, with two members not present, you do have the right to ask for a continuance. I'm not sure if anyone had questions at the last meeting concerning this. So we could vote on this if you'd like.
Please.
Sure. So we'll take this out of order and ask for a row call. Mr. Bacioli is absent. Mr. D'Angelo is absent. Mr. Lopes?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Mazzoni?
Yes.
Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Yes. And I thank you for getting that clarification. Please wait till you get something from the city clerk's office, but congratulations.
Thank you.
The next application before the board is the application of B.C. Boston Development LLC, 141 Tremont Street, Third Floor, Boston, Mass., requesting a parking variance, reducing the number of parking spaces required by 70 parking spaces in the Wonderland Transit Oriented Development District at 646 Ocean Avenue Revere to enable the appellant to construct a seven-story, 209-apartment unit, mixed-use residential, retail, and restaurant-use building at 646 Ocean Avenue.
The presentation, we will allow five-minute presentation. For any proponents and opponents, you will have up to three minutes to speak on this. So if you'd like to give a slight presentation?
Thank you very much. Share my background.
Yeah.
Good afternoon. My name is David Jakowitz. I'm the attorney for the developer, B.C. Boston Development LLC. You all have the package that I just handed out. With me this afternoon in the front row is Mark Forlenza of the Belphanti Companies out of Hampden, Connecticut, and also Dave Sullivan, our engineer from Malone and McBroom, and he will talk specifically about parking. Thank you for hearing our appeal today regarding what I think is a very exciting project at 646 Ocean Avenue. First, I'd like to orient you to the site, which you are likely quite familiar with. The lot has long been owned by Alfonso D'Amico, who I think is here this evening. But you can just, you can continue your packages as well. The lot is here on Ocean Avenue, 646, and directly behind, only directly behind it is the Wonderland T-Stop, which is critical to its location, so close to Mass. Transit. Next door is 500 Ocean Avenue, was probably being built there today, and this is 650, which is an existing multifamily, and the Vanguard is next to that. This is just a broader, closer up view to show you that this is 500 Ocean Avenue, this is Grace Door Beer and Vanguard, the next one. Again, that would be Wonderland in the back. That's contained in your packages at tabs number one and two. And just to orient you to what you have there today, you have at tab three and four, you have a site plan and a parking plan, and Mark will talk about that in a few minutes. Tab five are some site photos of the property in its current form. It's currently used as a commuter parking lot. Tab six is the rendering of the proposed project, and Mark will talk a little bit more about that. And then lastly, at tab seven, you have a very detailed parking study that Dave Sullivan will address in a few minutes. The property is 1.3-acre lot located in the Wonderland Overlay Transit Oriented Development Overlay District. The underlying zoning there is RC2. As you heard from the public announcement, it's a seven-story stepped high-rise mixed-use building proposing 209 units with retail and restaurant. That's sort of a unique component of this project. A lot, I think without exception, the other projects on Ocean Avenue do not have any retail or restaurant component. It was something that, in discussions with the stakeholders for the city, they believe was a really quite important part to add to this component, to add to this project as it really livens the streetscape and adds to economic development in the neighborhood. With the restaurant and retail, we'll have 242 parking spaces. The code would otherwise require 312 parking spaces, so we're here tonight seeking a variance for 70 spaces. But as you'll hear from our park, the parking analysis will indicate that there is, that we think that there should be plenty of parking for the use based on the other properties, very similar in nature to this, but without the retail/restaurant component, where they have an excess of parking. And with the Wonderland T-Stop in the back, even more overflow, there's tremendous excess capacity in the Wonderland Garage. We have previously met with many of the city's stakeholders. We went through site plan review, and the preliminary site plan review indicated this was the only issue, the parking. It's the only zoning violation. It's otherwise fully dimensionally compliant. In particular, we met with the police chief, Jim Guido, and he had raised concerns about parking and traffic specifically. We sat down with him, we showed him some of the information that you have here today before you, and I can say without exception, Mr. Guido really liked the project and believed that the parking that we're supplying is more than enough to satisfy the anticipated demand. We also met with Ira Novoselfsky and the city, the ward counselor, and same thing. Ira's response was, if the chief likes it as far as parking, I think this is a great project, really likes the retail/restaurant component, thinks the building is really attractively designed. As you'll see later, the parking here is, yes, sir?
There's one in the back.
Oh, boy, okay. I wonder if we could just beg the chair for a little bit more time. I think with that, you'll also have a letter before you from Bob O'Brien. I think Bob is going to speak for a moment indicating that our parking is at par with --
My phone is on silent.
-- in terms of use. In terms of utilization, that our parking anticipated, it's 1.16 per unit, is the same or more than many of the other approved projects on Ocean Avenue. I'd be happy to talk about the variance standard. You have it before you in the application itself. It's fairly well drafted, drafted in a complete manner and gives the basis for the grant of the variance. With that, I'll just briefly turn it over to Mark Forlenza, and he'll talk about the
Good morning, Chairman Tucker. Good evening, Chairman Tucker, and board members. I won't, I won't take too much time because I know we have the five-minute limit.
Can you just say, can you even address the --
Sure.
Put that in the calendar?
It's Mark Forlenza, Brookfield, Connecticut. F.O.R.L.E.N.Z.A. Yeah, I won't take too, I just want to just go through the project quickly, just to orient it to what we're proposing on the site, and then I'll turn it over to the traffic engineer. As David explained, what we're proposing is a 209-apartment home community targeted specifically to two groups, millennials and empty nesters. I think it's significant to just to stay upfront that unlike the other apartment communities in the area, we are targeting millennials, and you'll see in your package that the average square foot is approximately 600 feet. So these are very small apartment homes. In addition, if you look at our mix, again, in your package, we propose 50% studios. And the reason why I mention that, because it does have bearing on our request for a variance. Typically, studios do not generate as many cars, not typically, they do not generate as many cars as ones in two bedrooms, so that's a significant fact that differentiates us from the other communities. Secondarily, we are including a retail component here, which is included, as you can see, on the ground floor. That's unlike any of the other communities. Again, this is local retail. It'll be a general store for the buildings in the area. In addition, it'll be a restaurant for the people that live in those communities. Again, they will not generate a lot of space usage because it'll be folks that are generally in the area. Just quickly with the architecture, there's two stories with the retail in front and a leasing office, both on the first floor and the third floor. It's oriented sort of like a U, and if you just take, with a U building with a pool in the front looking out over the ocean, and then a courtyard, courtyard in the back. That would be inside courtyard, through the leasing office, and then a pool in the front. Again, target market is the millennials. All the, there'll be onsite management typically of what you see in other communities. There's three things I just want you to keep in mind when you hear the variance. One, our mix is dramatically different than the other mixes on the street. We have very small apartments, and we have, we have a majority of the apartments are studios, which will not generate parking. Secondarily, we do have a retail use that we don't believe the parking that is required in the zoning code is necessary given its proximity in the, on the beach and with other buildings. And last and most importantly, which, you know, David Sullivan will let you, will let you know, is we studied the parking, the parking utilization at three buildings that are adjacent to us, and we compared their utilization, not what they're required to build, but actually what, how many cars are actually parked in the buildings. So we studied those three buildings, and what we found is what we were proposing for parking with the variance is in excess of what the parking that is utilized in those other three buildings. So we are quite comfortable that we can park for our residents because frankly, parking is the biggest amenity for us, because if you can't park the residents, they won't lease at your place. We feel that it is sufficient. The police chief, who we met independently after our site plan review meeting, asked us to study the Wonderland train station to see if there was excess parking there, and we found, you know, after 5 o'clock, as you would expect, there's an abundance of parking for overflow. So with that, I'll just turn it over to David, and he can take another five minutes when he's only going to tell you, he's going to take 30 seconds.
Good evening. My name is David Sullivan. I'm a professional engineer, and I'm with Malone and McBroom. I manage the traffic engineering group there. We were asked to take a look at this proposal and come up with an estimate of what the parking generation might be. And we did that evaluation. In particular, we looked at the Vanguard. So we first looked at comparing the demographics of the two, and Mark referred to this, but in general, there's 194 units at Vanguard, of which 72% of them are one-bedroom units. Proposed is 209 units, but 80% of them are either one-bedroom or studios. So the Vanguard has no studios. We have a mix of studio and one-bedroom and a significant amount more of them from a percentage basis. So we thought that was a good comparison to make and to look at their parking demand, so we did that. So we counted the amount of parking there, and we had heard that their, because their parking was not bundled, meaning you buy the parking in addition to paying your lease, we looked at who was parking on the street overnight as well. So when we compared the on-street parking, or added the on-street parking with the people parking in the garage, we found out that for all of the occupied units, about each one of those would generate about .86 parking spaces, which is consistent not only with what we expected because of the location and the type of product this is, but it's also anecdotally what we heard some of the other buildings in the area are generating for parking. So if we applied that parking ratio, and again, that's a little bit conservative because we have smaller units and a greater percentage of smaller units, and we applied that to this particular project, we'd need about 180 parking spaces. Proposed on this site is 242 parking spaces. So our conclusion, just based on that pure evaluation, is that there'll be ample parking once this is developed. Now, why, again, the unit mix is one of the things that drives parking demand, but the other thing that drives parking demand is its location. As Mark talked about, this is kind of target marketed to millennials, and many of those millennials are relying on Mass. Transit. My daughter, for example, is one of those that shed her car when she moved to the suburbs of Boston and has taken the T in. So it's not unusual. It's kind of expected when we, when we got into this. So the proximity to the T and the unit mix really validated what we found. We were then asked if we could look at the other parking in the area, and this was by the police chief, because he said, what else is going on around here? Is there other parking? Well, we did, what we did is looked at the surface parking, the on-street parking, we looked at the Wonderland Garage, and did some counts. We started after lunch and counted every two hours until we got to early evening, just to see what was happening there. And what we found was, at the garage itself, there was always over 400 spaces vacant in that parking garage when we did the count. But more importantly, what we found in all of the counts, as the day went on and we reached the late afternoon into early evening, the parking garage and the on-street parking and the service lot parking was decreasing consistently. Why is that important? Well, with a retail use, you have just the opposite pattern. So when our parking is increasing, parking in the area is decreasing. So there's ample, I won't say ample parking, there is parking available out there for general public, but more importantly, we won't be affecting that, and we're actually, we match quite well with our pattern of parking with what's happening out there in the, in the general vicinity. So that's as quick a summary as I can. I'd be happy to answer any questions. If not, I'll just turn it back over.
Okay, seeing that it's a public hearing, I'll now ask for proponents. Is there anyone in favor? And I would ask that, oh, I didn't know you were coming. Welcome.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Ira Novoselfsky, 53 Deehong Street. I'm the ward two counselor, and this is in my ward on Ocean Avenue. And I have met with the applicants. I reviewed everything. I told them what my conditions were and what my thoughts were, and they seemed to have met my expectations on this. I talked to them about the parking and the leasing and to be included in the lease, and that we really didn't want people to park on the street. I was pleased with the ratio of apartments, you know, from the one-bedroom to two-bedroom, where there are more the one-bedroom than twos, and that guarantees that there won't be any large families living there, mostly millennials. And also, the commercial portion of it down on the first floor, they're taking everything into consideration, and actually, they're helping out the other buildings by providing this commercial segment of the, of the building. So I seem to be pleased with it. I look forward to a good construction and a good working relationship with the team and the contractors, and to make sure that the people on Ocean Avenue aren't put aside like they have been over the last two years with the other construction going on, and take into consideration the traffic flow, the reduced park, reduced travel lanes that have been created, and to make sure that people are safe driving that roadway. So I'm pleased with it, and I'm in favor of it, and I look forward to you approving this. Thank you. I know it's going to be tabled, so I'll look for the next meeting. Thank you.
Ira, would you able to get a copy from Bob O'Brien of his letter, just so you can have it for your file?
I did not, but I have their package, so, but I will get a copy of it.
Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, my name is Bob O'Brien. I live at 10 Ocean Avenue, and I am Director of Economic Development for the City of Revere. And on behalf of the city, I stand in favor of this project and ZBA approval of this variance. Much has already been said, and I will not take much more of your time, except to note that the variance that is requested here is consistent with variances which have been previously approved by this body for other projects in the area. And in fact, as has been noted, it's even above what the actual experience of parking in nearby projects, specifically Ocean Avenue and the Beach House, for example, which is located farther away from Wonderland. So it's our opinion that the parking that is requested here will be adequate to serve both the retail and the residential needs. We, as always, insist that they commit to these variances in such a way that they will not have an adverse impact inadvertently or otherwise on the community as a whole, and particularly on on-street parking in the area. So as usual, we have outlined a series of five steps, which we have in the past coordinated with the Zoning Board of Appeal, that will assure that there will not be any on-street parking from the residents of this property. We ask again that these conditions be made part of any approval of the ZBA. I would just conclude by noting that this is a worthy project. It's a particularly important project. It is the next-to-last parcel that we developed that will complete the Waterfront Square Development, and perhaps more notably, it is the only privately-owned parcel in the Waterfront Square complex. And we were very concerned that it be developed in a manner consistent with the plans for the public parcels, and in that regard, I want to particularly commend the existing owner, Al D'Amico, who has worked with the city to make sure that this final private parcel was actually developed as part of the larger complex. Having said that, we understand this is going to be continued, but in anticipation of that vote, we would urge the favorable vote of the ZBA, and we're more than happy to answer any questions that you may have. I will also note, just in closing, that as has been previously noted, this group has appeared before the Site Plan Review Committee. The purpose of that, of course, was to get the denial letter that allowed them to come before you, but they did also discuss at that time substantive elements of the project, including traffic and parking. They have subsequently met, as has been noted, with both the police chief and the ward counselor, both of whom are supportive. I expect, once the variance is granted, site plan review approval will be forthcoming quickly, and all of those things we think are appropriate and to be recommended. Thank you.
Thank you. Just for the note, Bob, I did note that in number two now, that you say that this commitment will be enforced by the Inspection Service Department, which is keen, because that's definitely something that we request to be added, and it's in there.
Excuse me, I believe that has been made part of previous ZBA approvals. I know it was in our letter of support for them, so I know the Vanguard, I believe, certainly was conditioned in that way. I will, by the way, just make one correction. This is not going to be the first restaurant in the Waterfront Square complex. At the insistence of the mayor and the Economic Development Department, every Waterfront Square project approved in this administration has included restaurant and retail space, specifically including the Gate Residential, Gate Residential Project under construction and the hotel about to begin construction. So this will continue that very favorable trend, which wasn't evident in the early stages, but is to be commended now.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Hearing not all closed that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Anyone opposed? Hearing not all closed that side of the hearing. Again, the, if you pressed a button just to turn that on?
Thank you.
You can request to have this continued till April 24th?
Sure, if we could, just a couple of brief comments, if I could, in less than 30 seconds. The conditions that we have seen and will wholeheartedly agree to would be that, of course, the parking is bundled with the rent, which will discourage the street parking, that the parking will be limited to 242 spaces, and that no leases with persons with cars after the 242 spaces have been leased will be made. We'll provide tenant bicycle parking in the garage at no cost, and provide convenient access to bike-sharing programs. We'll provide two spaces on-site for car sharing, such as Zip or the like, and we'll also develop a transportation management plan to encourage the use of public transportation.
Thank you.
And so I would request that we continue the hearing until April 24th.
Fourth. Is there a motion on the floor to continue? Row call, please.
Row call is to continue this to April 24th. Mr. Bacioli is absent. Mr. D'Angelo is absent. Mr. Lopes, yes. Mr. Mazzoni?
Yes.
Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
This is continue to April 24th.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
At that time, your presentation will probably even have to be, could be shorter, but if you bring a computer, I believe that you can find out that you can go to some plug underneath here and present it on the boards rather than this.
Okay, thanks so much.
You're welcome.
The next, the next application before the board is Application A1904, which is a application of Christine McCarron, 450 Revere Beach Boulevard, requesting a six-month extension of City Revere Zoning Board of Appeals variance A1704 to enable the appellant to further alter and extend a pre-existing non-conforming structure to convert a single-family dwelling to a two-family dwelling on Lot Part C at 450 Revere Beach Boulevard Revere.
Good afternoon. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon. Christine McCarron, 450 Revere Beach Boulevard, Revere.
Okay. The request is rather self-explanatory, but -- The request is rather self-explanatory, but seeing that it's a public hearing, I'll have to ask, are there any proponents? Anyone in favor? Hearing not all closed that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Anyone opposed? Please step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Lawrence Michelson. I'm at 454 Revere Beach Boulevard. I'm the front lot, and Christine is in the rear. And there's a problem with the private way. Since I have been there for three years, I have done the plowing, the cleaning of the driveway. I have maintained the driveway. I have put a new driveway in. Nobody steps up to the plate and wants to pitch in. Nobody does anything over there.
I'm not trying to cut you short, but that's not part of the appeal tonight. If you're opposed to her receiving the requests?
I am opposed to it.
Okay. As far as the driveway goes, again, you'd have to go to the Building Department, take it up with them.
Okay.
Okay, I'm not trying to be rude, but that's, we've talked about that in the past. It's unfortunate.
Well, I'm opposed to it.
Okay. All right. Are there any?
Thank you.
Anyone else? Could you kindly step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record?
452 Revere Beach Boulevard. I am in front of the proposed two-family building, and I am opposed to it.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other opponents? Kindly step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Kevin Fulgoney, 457 Revere Beach Boulevard. I'm not particularly against what they're doing. Oh, sorry. Not against what they're doing, I just need a clarification. The lot consists of four separate lots. And... Oh, I'll give you this. So T entered the question by, it's a C, D, and E, in four. The house is sitting on four.
But, so you're correct.
So she's actually trying to sell the the house with the plan and selling off the back lot separate, and I just wanted to make sure that that's allowed or not allowed. If you look at the listing on the front, I highlighted the part where she's selling off the back lane.
The previous submission included the existing dwelling. Do you want to press the microphone?
The previous presentation to the board included the existing structure and C, to the best of my knowledge. You can question the applicant if you wish.
I just want to know if it's...
Does she, you want to question her?
Could you step up to the microphone and answer that question?
It would be in the location of the existing structure, which is actually on Lot Four. And I think the way that the special permit is written, it says it's on Lot C, but I think it's just was confusion with the way the plan was, when the clerk looked at the The existing structure is on Lot Four, and that's where the proposed two-family as well. The same footprint, the same.
And C behind it. Right.
So it is part of two parcels? No, it would just, it's just Lot Four.
C is not included?
You haven't included in the... Do you have your application?
Your application included the parking and stuff right there, right?
This is all... This is one, so these are the other lots, because this is part of Lot Four.
Do you have the original one?
I don't have the original application here.
But that there... This is all, this whole thing is Lot Four, this whole parcel. And then this is...
The question is, are you including C, D, and E as a part of this proposal?
As far as building goes, you mean?
Yes.
No.
No. She's not including C, D, and E as a part of this proposal.
There wouldn't be any, there wouldn't be any building going on, is that what you're asking? Or do you just mean for the acreage?
We just have to have a brief recess for a second.
On the special permit, it does say the existing structure, and then it says Lot C, but the existing structure is on Lot Four, so I think it was just a mistake.
Unfortunately, we don't have your old plans up here. That was last year. This is, you wouldn't want this voted on tonight. Are you asking for a continuance till April 24th?
If, I mean, if it's possible to have it decided.
One vote denies it. Keep that in mind. Do you wish to continue till next month?
Well, it's, it's an existing application.
And it's an existing application, and now we're seeing that it was for a parcel at C that was approved on, and now you're saying it's Lot Four. So there's already questions in the decision that we made before that's been brought to our attention, so I would suggest that you ask for a continuance, so that can be looked at by the clerk on the original application.
Okay, that's fine. What happened was, and I didn't notice it until recently, but when I got that special permit, it's actually wrong. It should say Lot Four, but when you look at the plan, you can see why that mistake was made.
And that, it could very well be, but is there a motion to continue? Roll call, please.
Question comes on continuing this to April 24th. Mr. Bacioli is absent. Mr. D'Angelo is absent. Mr. Lopes, yes. Mr. Mazzoni, yes. Mr. Pelton, yes. Mr. Tucker, yes. This is continued to the...
I'd ask that we get that clarified before the next meeting on April 24th.
So how do I go about getting that changed?
The clerk will notify you if there's any changes that need to be made.
Okay.
We'll look at the original plan and see what was presented.
Okay. Thanks.
My understanding was, my, my understanding was that when it originally was approved, it was for the whole parcel, the four little lots?
No, it wasn't for four lots. We had it listed as approved for parcel C with the, and it stated that there was a home. The home's on parcel four.
She could sell the back one separately?
The, the back of the property is not part of the hearing that took place in April of 2017.
So it's okay to take a non-conforming lot and make it not, more non-conforming?
Yes. That was the determination back in 2017.
Oh, okay.
But I appreciate you bringing that to our attention.
The next application before the board is Application A1905, the application of Paul E. Rupp Jr. in Heidi K. Rupp, 371 Revere Street, Revere, appealing from the decision of the Inspector of Buildings of the City of Revere wherein the Inspector of Buildings has allowed the use of a building at 375 Revere Street, which the appellant alleges is in violation of City of Revere zoning ordinances. The appellant requests the ZBA to reverse the decision of the Inspector of Buildings and to order a cease-and-desist notice relative to the building permit issued at 375 Revere Street issued on February 4th, 2019. The appellant further requests the ZBA to find that the former use at 375 Revere Street, wholesale product distribution, was illegal. Further, the appellant requests the ZBA to find that the proposed use is prohibited by the City of Revere zoning ordinance because the proposed use is a change or extension of use that is more detrimental than the prior use, thereby changing the quality and character of the neighborhood.
Good afternoon. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon. Paul Rupp.
Test, can you, one moment, please, a brief recess. I think we lost the signal.
For the edification of the public, you will be able to view this on YouTube. We are live on YouTube, so that will be recorded. Our other vendor is not working at this time. Please present yourself.
Good afternoon. Paul Rupp, 371 Revere Street. Appellant, quick question. Since I'm the appellant, I have neighbors and butters here, are they proponents?
You're, you submitted the applicant.
Yeah.
So you're going to do your presentation, then I ask for proponents, and then opponents.
So people that are here, butters.
That are against, that are in favor of the denial? How would this vote, this would be?
People in favor of his proposition, which is to, all of that, what I just read.
So they'd be in favor of yours, so they'd be proponents.
Okay, so just so they know. Okay, as you know...
Now, just because this is a lengthy agenda, I am, you presented a numerous paper that we've already read as far as...
Okay, so then why don't I do, then why don't I do this? I wouldn't, I wouldn't normally read from my notes, but I think that's what I'm going to do to move it along.
Okay.
So forgive me for reading. So, as you know, it's our position, 375 Revere Street does not receive protections in future to wholesale and product distribution activities as non-conforming uses under the current zoning ordinance, because that use was never legally established before the zoning prohibited that use in our GB district.
Not to cut you short, but did you get the last variance that was granted from the Board of Appeals?
I received that email at probably around 2:00 today, and I asked what relevance that has today.
So you would have the record?
So you'd have the record on file.
I do have a record.
Okay. Just want to make sure that you got it.
Thank you very much. So we maintain that the wholesale and product distribution activities commenced, when the, when this business transitioned from, and to wholesale product distribution activities, at the time of the transition, that use was prohibited by zoning in our district. We believe that what happened was, is that at one point in time, there was an addition that was built at the back of 375 Revere Street. That addition was built to expand the storage and added loading docks to the back of 375 Revere Street, and which was to further the purpose of wholesale product distribution activities, which was, which was not allowed at the time that that addition was built. So as a result, I'm saying that that wholesale and product distribution activities were commenced around that time, and when they were commenced at around that time, the zoning did not allow it. If this board believes that wholesale and product distribution activities were legally established as pre-existing non-conforming uses at this property, then that does not mean that commercial catering activities were legally established as pre-existing non-conforming uses at this property, as commercial catering activities were never carried on at this property before the zoning prohibited that use in our district. I believe that there's an incorrect assumption being made by others in regard to wholesale and product distribution activities. Those activities were legally, if, if you believe they were legally established, that then that activity did not include commercial catering activities at the property. I'm thinking that what's happening here is, is that people are looking at the present zoning, and the present zoning prohibits wholesale product distribution activities, including commercial catering activities, in our GB district. And I believe what they're doing then is, is they're saying that, well, if we find that a wholesale product distribution activity was in fact a legal use, then so much, so should a commercial catering activity. That's mistaken. Commercial wholesale product and distribution activities do not include commercial catering activities at that property. It never did, and at the time that they were there, and it can't be done now because the zoning prohibits it. If this board believes that the wholesale and product distribution activities were legally established as pre-existing non-conforming uses at this property, that does not mean that applies to the entire building. Getting back to the addition, and that was started in the late 80s, and carried through a variance that was sent to me today, that was granted in the late 90s, I believe that that variance itself does not, hold, take a step back for a minute. So that variance includes in it, there's actually a letter in the, in the file for the building inspector's file, from the then-current zoning attorney for the Biancos, that says that it, then admits, that no zoning protection is afforded to the remaining uncompleted addition and is for storage of existing product only. So getting back to the addition, according to that letter, the addition does not receive protection for a pre-existing non-conforming use of wholesale product distribution activities because that use was prohibited at that time. So it was understood that that was for storage only. However, according to the plan that was proposed to install the commercial kitchen, they have operations going into an area that should have only been storage. So they are extending operations into an area that's for storage only and is, should not be used for wholesale product distribution activities. I've got a memorandum on that that I, that I prepared, that I'm, I'd like to give to the board, that attaches a copy of the, of the commercial kitchen plan. I've got the area that was, should be for storage, that is showing an extension of, an unlawful extension of the, of the use into that storage area, and I've got a copy of that, of that letter. I also think it's important to note, since the variance was brought up, that just because a variance was issued in the late 90s to give relief for dimensional and zoning issues, that in and of itself is not a permit to use this property as wholesale and product distribution use. I can give that to the board now? We've got five copies. And the attorney for Bianco?
Yes.
Hi there.
You're welcome.
So now, I'd like to, I'd like to shift this to the other parts of my appeal. So if this board believes that the prior use were legally established as a pre-existing non-conforming use, then the proposed use is a change or substantial extension of the prior use, subjecting it to present zoning, which prohibits commercial catering activities in our district. Here, the use fails on all considerations under applicable law, thereby subjecting it to current zoning. First, the proposed use is a change, because no previous commercial catering activities ever existed at this property. Second, the proposed use is not reasonably adapted to the prior use, because the prior use and the proposed use are two totally different businesses. Third, the proposed use is different in quality and character as well in degree of the prior use, as I will explain. Bianco's prior, prior use operated about 60 hours per week. Here, we have 24/7, 365 days a year. I am aware of, in regard to the proposed use, I'm aware of a letter that was submitted March 21st by Eric Cohenair that claims that... March 21st by Air Cullin Air, that claims that hours of operation vary slightly, but it's rare that the facility is open more than 18 hours per day, which is typically scheduled from 4:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. daily, with staff of about six employees. That is not their business model. Also, I'd like to point out that it says typically. That doesn't mean they will not have overnight operations. So again, their use of 24/7, 365 days a year is not as it was prior, Monday through Friday, half a day on Saturday, close on Sunday. Further differences, Bianco, raw meat processing only. Here, we have commercial catering of all fresh food. No Bianco, no kitchen, no cooking. Here, we have a commercial kitchen and cooking. No overnight operations for Bianco. Here, we have overnight operations every day of the year, and operations will be every day of the year. We have increased noise due to the increased use of the refrigeration. We have now exhaust ventilation and smells and noise that we didn't have before, and we have traffic, safety, and parking issues that are more completely outlined in my original memorandum, so I will, I won't discuss those at this point in time, other than to say that, I'll just have you refer to that. And I reserve the right to reply to any concerns that any opponents have to that. So we believe that the change that I mentioned in the business type, and the differences that I just mentioned, will have a detrimental effect on our neighborhood. And like I said, I have some proponents here, so when you're, when you are ready, I'm almost done. I also would like to say in the alternative, that if the Revere zoning Board of Appeals contemplates the proposed use as a modification due to the fact cooking and commercial catering activities were never carried on at 375 Revere Street, and/or a modification due to an extension of the proposed use into that part of the building allowed for storage only, then the building permit must be rescinded, and the ZBA may order Bianco to seek special permit for the city council in accordance with Chapter 1740 of the current zoning audits. So now I'd like to turn it over to those people in favor of my position.
You don't turn it over. I'll, I conduct the meeting, yes, sir. Are there any proponents which are in favor of the appellant's request to reverse the decision of the building inspector? Kindly step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon. My name is Abigail Klein. I live at 39 McKinley Street. My house is behind 375 Revere Street, down in the presidential neighborhood, which, as you're probably all aware, branches off of Revere Street. They're all dead ends. You essentially have an M coming off Revere Street. 375 Revere Street is up the top across the street from the elementary school, and all of the traffic routes down through our neighborhood. So my life will be directly impacted by any change of use in this building. I don't want to beat a dead horse. I think Mr. Rupp pretty well summarized the legal argument. However, even assuming that this is a legal prior nonconforming use, which I don't think has been firmly established by any means, although obviously we've yet to hear from the attorney for the opponent, what you're looking at is an extension of use that fails all three prongs of the powers test. If you look at any of the land court decisions recently that deal with changes from one type of business.
Okay, I'm not, I'm going to cut you short. Your, your proponent, do you?
I support denial of the building permit.
Okay, then that's it. He gave his dissertation, you just, you just tell us if you're.
Okay, I'm, I support denial of the building permit, because what will end up happening is we'll have increased traffic, the kids at the school next door will be at increased risk from delivery trucks, and you're also looking at significant increase in noise and smells through the entire residential neighborhood that's behind this general business zone, because the prevailing wind is straight off the ocean.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak?
Yes. Hello, sir. My name is Terry Bradley. I am a 79-year resident of 43 McKinley Street, and I tell you that that area is not conducive to trucks and everything else that would come in, considering that the Paul Revere School is just right there, that in order for them to service, to bring in the stuff they would need to cook and then to send it out, they would literally have to back trucks up into the school. I mean, the area is just not conducive to that, and as far as the odors are concerned and whatnot, ours is strictly residential. It's not built for commercial. It should not be there, and it's not for you. And I thank you for your time.
Okay, your name was?
Terry Bradley.
Thank you very much. Anyone else as a proponent?
My name is William Decker. I also reside at 39 McKinley Street. I'm a proponent for this denial, for many of the reasons already stated concerning increased traffic use, also for just generally changing the nature of our neighborhood, from a space where we are regularly looking at families and community members interacting, to a space where we are looking at people commuting into their 24/7 job. I think that that definitely impacts what our neighborhood would be, and so I'm a proponent. Thank you.
Okay. Next, please. Anyone else?
Good afternoon, Chairman and Board. My name is Corey DePina, 14 McKinley Street, Revere. I believe that the infrastructure of a business within the residential zoning is pretty hectic. It should be taken into consideration policies that revolve appropriate zoning in regards to the neighborhood. Traffic is a nightmare already on a beach day, on a nice beach day on Revere Street, and during specific zoning rush hours, so I'm definitely opposed to the people moving in. Thank you.
Are there anyone else?
Hi, my name is Christine Tigs. I live at 18 McKinley Street, and I abut the back of the building. I am proposed to it because of everything that everybody said, but also as a mother who has a child that goes to the Paul Revere School, which is right there, the chaos in the morning already with just the parents' cars is crazy, so to then add trucks on top of that is just not a good thing for the kids or the school.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Leo Thompson of 14 McKinley Street. I have the property directly behind the existing building, the sausage factory, and for many years, they exhausted the wash as they washed the building, so it was, I don't know what was coming out, spraying directly on my yard. With everything everyone else said, I just wanted to add that, that we've suffered for many years from the exhaust. There were times I would have to clear it with them.
Sir, whether you, I sympathize with you, but that has nothing to do with what's happening right now. If you're a proponent in favor of reversing the building decision, that's what you have to speak on.
That's right.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else?
My name's Dennis Ranahan. I live at 33 Washington Street in Revere, Mass. My main concern is the safety of our children and our families. Everybody mentioned the school, but nobody mentioned the playground we have in that area too. And last year, sidewalks got all brand new, up to code. Now the streets are so much smaller, it's hard to get trucks and even cars down, so I'm against it. Thank you. Ranahan. Yes.
Is there anyone else?
Steven Barnes. I live at 20 McKinley Street. I abut Bianco's. I'm against it, between the traffic, the smells and the noise. Thank you.
Anyone else? Just kindly stand up and make sure you, we'll be delayed all night if we keep.
My name is Janine Raphael, and I live at 11 McKinley Street, and it's been a mess since I moved in there 20 years ago, with all the traffic and everything, and I just don't want the, more traffic to come in, and the kids schooling and everything. Thank you.
I'm representing my mother, Helen DiMatio. She lives at 24 McKinley Street, and the ventilation will just be blown right across if they were able to raise it above, because, you know, the smells of all foods, nobody wants to smell it till 7:00 o'clock at night.
Okay, just for the edification of the public, a restaurant can go in this establishment. Am I correct, the zoning is available for a restaurant? Just, but what I'm hearing here, as far as odor, if you're just opposed to odor, a restaurant can be in that establishment. So if you're stepping up to the microphone in favor of reversing the building inspector's decision, that's quite all right, but I just want to point out that the odor of a restaurant that could be there, and there's many restaurants on that, that street, but this property could be a restaurant, just on the basic current zoning.
Hi, my name is Nancy Ranahan. I live at 33 Washington Street. I'm here for the same, as a proponent, because of all the same reasons that other people have given. Number one, the safety in the area, the added stress on the streets is just crazy with the children. Thank you.
Could you just say your name again, so we could get it spelled correctly?
It's Ranahan, Nancy Ranahan, R-A-N-A-H-A-N.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak as a proponent? You can, a restaurant can happen, that's all I'm saying. It's part of our zoning that a restaurant could be there.
I understand that it's a general business zoning and that a restaurant could go in. Again, I'm Abigail Klein of 39 McKinley Street. However, a restaurant would not be the same type of use as a commercial catering operation, and there's a reason that this type of maintenance and distribution has its own special section of the zoning code and is only permitted by rights.
I'm not disagreeing with you there. I said odor. If you, I stated the odor question.
Odor is part of it. It's not all of it.
But I was just stating, the people that were stating odor, I wanted to clarify that a restaurant could be there, because some people come up and that's all they were concerned about was odor, if you were listening here tonight.
I think most of the people who stood up said that they were concerned about everything everyone else is addressing.
There were a couple that just were concerned about odor. That's why I wanted to make the point.
They can correct me if I'm wrong, but a restaurant would be a very different type and amount of use.
I don't, I don't disagree with you on that. I disagree with you that people weren't just stating odor.
Hi, guys. My name's Jack Collins, C-O-L-L-I-N-S, 25 McKinley Street. I'm opposed to what's going on, and everybody that's come up and gave their proponent's decision, but I'm just concerned about the 24-hour operation, and also, how many flights are there they're going to be operating out of there? Are they going to do wide bodies? Are they going to do domestic? Are they going to do private aircraft? Because that, that is the amount of volume that's going to be coming in.
Good questions, and that, I think that that's going to be part of their answers, hopefully.
Okay, yep, that's one, one thing I want.
Seeing that this is a public hearing, I first have to ask if there's any proponents, so anyone in favor of reversing the decision of the building inspector? Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on that as a proponent? Hearing not all closed that side of the hearing. Are there any opponents? Anyone opposed? Please state your name and address for the record.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, staff, members of the neighborhood, good evening. My name is Earl Duval. I'm with the law firm of Duval, Klasnick &amp; Thompson, located at 210 Broadway and Linfield. So first, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, what I'd like to share is that the Biancos have been operating.
Okay, are you speaking as an applicant, for the applicant, or are you speaking as an opponent?
For the applicant.
Okay, so that, I first have to ask if there's any opponents?
Okay. I am.
Oh, you're any opponent?
Yeah.
Okay, but are you going to be speaking as the applicant answering questions as well?
Correct.
So I'm just going to ask if there's any other opponents that want to get up and speak? Because the applicant will speak and answer all the questions. Am I correct?
Is he a mark, give a presentation first?
But no, with the present, we still have to ask about, I have to ask opponents, and then we'd be able to come up and speak and answer the question. The presentation was already, okay, I apologize. So we're doing the presentation as we speak, okay.
I mean, I'm here to oppose.
Yes.
The appeal. So I represent the trust, and I represent the Biancos. The Biancos have operated from this facility for almost 59 years, and I would submit to this board that it's absolutely a, been classified as a legal nonconforming use. I, you know, did a brief, you know, file review, and if I may, Mr. Clerk, I would like to distribute a few things to the, to the board. I have some additional. So again, I just handed out two things, Mr. Chairman, and I just copied the first page of this, but this is correspondence, you know, dated back in 1985, between the Assistant City Solicitor and the city planner, with regards to a legal opinion with regards to this property. And I would just like to bring to the board's attention that even at that time, it was considered, you know, the nonconforming use, and it was classified as operating a wholesale and product distribution use. Again, wholesale and product distribution use. That is what was changed when the ordinance was codified, and the definition for that use, in fact, does include this, and I'm reading from the definition, "This use type shall also include commercial bakery food processing and preparation, including distribution and commercial catering activities." So again, without belaboring that issue, I think it's clear that it's a, you know, legal nonconforming use. You know, with all due respect to the appellant, Mr. Rupp, you know, I think it's very unfortunate that a lot of misinformation has been shared. Misinformation was shared in the appeal that was filed with this board. Misinformation was filed, was prepared and submitted in the memorandum, and then also someone canvassed the neighborhood with documentation that is just not accurate. And it's very unfair as to, you know, how this proceeding has commenced. You know, I, I fear, you know, what has happened is that folks took a look at the proposed tenant's website, Air Cullin Air, and they listed everything that that company does, and then presented it in the, in the worst light possible. You know, all the concerns that have been raised this evening by the neighborhood are in fact going to be, you know, much more addressed and much less detrimental with a tenant, you know, such as Air Cullin Air. What I, what I distributed to the board is a table, and that table shows the, the activity at the location, and that's both for Bianco and the proposed activity for Air Cullin Air. And I broke this into operations and use, I broke it into hours, employees, delivery vehicles, incoming, delivery vehicles, outgoing, trash, heavy machinery, and noise, and odors. And I think if you look to see, and I think many of us understand already, what it is that has occurred at that facility at 375 with regards to, you know, processing, processing upwards of 100,000 pounds of, you know, meat, you know, per week, with retail sales, outgoing truck deliveries, lots of deliveries, you know, back and forth from dry storage. There were 35 employees at that facility. 20 to 25 people were parked, you know, throughout the neighborhoods. Deliveries Monday through Friday, you know, the large trailers, over-the-road trailers, city trailers, street job trailers, again, shuttles back and forth. Bianco alone operated 10 to 12 delivery trucks out of that facility. Now if I just briefly look to the other side, there's only going to be, there'll be two shifts in maybe. two shifts and maybe six employees during each shift at this facility. I have two representatives from Air Culliner here with me tonight. Currently, there are only seven employees. Seven employees that would be working this facility. Talking about trucks and deliveries and what's going to happen. Two deliveries per week, a small box truck each day for fresh produce. Everyone's talking about cooking and odors and, and whatnot. This is a boutique commercial catering for private aircraft. 90% of what it is they're preparing is cold food, salads, sandwiches, cheese, fruit. 10% consists of, of hot meals. And what do they have in there for a kitchen? They have a probably similar to what many of us have in our home. A six, six burner range, a double wall oven, a griddle, a broiler. So there's, there's not going to be, there was the question about how many orders? There's about 40 individual orders, you know, from the private aircraft that come in each day. Usually, there's two outgoing deliveries, one early in the morning and then one later in the morning. They're operating for vehicles for delivery. Two Ford Transit Connect vans. That's the small van. The small van. I brought some pictures here if anyone would like to see those. One of them is refrigerated and one of them is not. The other two vehicles that they're going to have on site is a Ford Escape and a Toyota Yaris. Those are used by the employees if they need to go out and do any last minute shopping because it's all about the fresh produce. You know, I heard about the garbage. I tried to talk to Mr. Rupp yesterday and he's worried about rats and infestation. There was a 10-yard dumpster that was there when the Biancos were producing the sausage. There's not going to be a dumpster there now. The requirement is that all trash remain inside in a temperature-controlled room and then taken out, you know, six days a week.
Can I ask, was there a, a meeting that, was any meeting that took place with the, with Attorney Rupp to be prior to this coming to the Board of Appeals?
So again, with, with all due respect to Mr. Rupp, I, we did share information back and forth, which was nice. I tried to talk about those items and it was, you know, I think it's a combination, and I don't want to put words into Mr. Rupp's mouth, but he kept saying it's a combination of all these items. But I think when you look at the combination of all these items, there's significantly less traffic, significantly less.
I just asked the question if you admit because it, it seems like what was presented to us and what you just presented is mind-boggling.
Okay, so I can, I.
I'm from Bianco family and we did call you.
Okay, I, I just wanted to ask if that question and then now please continue and then don't, have a seat, sir. Please continue so we can get through this. Because technically, it's only a five minutes.
Right, so, so I guess I would, with due respect to the time, you know, summarize by saying that the Bianco family has had several opportunities to lease this property. And they've been very conscious about leasing it to someone that is going to be friendly to the neighborhood, someone who's not going to create all these issues that are being raised. And they want to be respectful of that. And I think that if we, if we, if we detour from, you know, the worst-case scenario, I mean, there is claims that we're doing commercial laundry at the facility. There's no commercial laundry at the facility. There's claims that we're bringing in international trash. There's no trash coming back from the, you know, from the airplanes. All of that is contracted out, you know, privately. You know, there's not all these giant trucks. In fact, there's small vehicles and small produce trucks, you know, that are happening. So I, you know, I think that the, the proposed tenant would be, you know, significantly less of a burden on the neighborhood and respectful of, of all the items that, you know, have been addressed. Again, Louis Bianco, who's the trustee of the, of the building, he's here and we could answer any specific questions. And then I have two representatives, the regional manager and the local manager from Air Culliner, who would be willing to answer any specific questions that the board or any of the neighbors, you know, might have, so.
Okay. Seeing that it's still a public hearing, I'm going to ask if there's any opponents who are, would like to speak. I see that there is one of the city councilors in the audience. Tony, if you wish to speak.
Anthony Zamburo, 87 High Street, Revere M.S. I'm speaking as an opponent to the repeal of the building permit. Number one, I looked at this, this is much less detrimental to the neighborhood than what Bianco's was. I don't know how anybody can say that the tractor trailer trucks and refrigeration trucks that were parked there for Bianco's is less detrimental than a couple of vans and a small box truck. I just don't see it. It's, you know, I know there's some neighbors here that have been convinced that this is a much more detrimental use. I disagree totally. And anybody that knows me knows that I tell the truth. I don't ever lie or ever make anything up. But when I looked at this, I, I said, this is much less detrimental. I dare say the building inspector would have easily, easily issued a building permit for a restaurant without any questions, would have been done over with. So, you know, the minor cooking that's going to go on with a facility like this, I think in the end, the neighbors will be pleased with a facility like this. So I felt it important to come up here and speak. And I, I got a copy of some of the documentation that came in and I got this letter from this company that is proposed to go in there. And one thing that really concerns me is that it, it states here that the complainant is the attorney for, for one of their direct competitors. I don't know if that's true or false, but if it's true, I'm very concerned. I think that on the merits, this use should be allowed there. And so I know you're short for time and I have a meeting that I have to get to, so I, I can't see how anybody with an open mind looks at this use as more detrimental than the sausage factory. I just don't see how anybody could come to that conclusion. So that's it. So I am, I'm opposed to the repeal of the building permit. Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anyone else that wish to speak? Okay. Please step up to the microphone, just state your name and address for the record, please.
Nicholas Lepore, and I own the house at 360 Revere Street, and I have no issue with it.
Thank you.
John DiSimoni, 65 Fairfield Street. I'm in favor of Bianco and Company.
Okay, seeing that, please step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Michelle Bianco. I actually live like right behind the, the company and I'm in favor of it.
Could you just state your address, please, for the record?
17 Roosevelt Street. Opposed to like what they're saying as far as like the trucks, I've lived with that for years because I've lived there for a very long time. And I can't imagine that this company is going to be anything like the meat company, so.
Okay, thank you. Seeing that, and believe me, the, the information that we've received is very, is very, is numerous and for paper. And it was, we also, I've received a call about a concern that there was something that went to the butters. And from what I can see that is presented, and did you just get a copy of what was presented? Do we have a copy of that to give to the? From what is being presented as what this company actually will be doing and servicing, I believe that some of the people that questioned as far as whether it's going to be the general public planes, this is just all private planes. So I believe that that question was answered by, to one of the people. If there's anything else that you feel that wasn't answered, I would ask that you please step up to the microphone just so that we can understand. Because I cannot believe myself that there was no public meeting that took place. The ward counselor has not received calls concerning about this being off of people being opposed to having this there, is, at least that's what he was explaining to me. He did receive a few calls, but it wasn't abundant. There's a lot of questions that need to be answered. So I am going to propose that this be continued and in hopes that, that the people that are, have questions can get a, a meeting together and try to answer them. And then if there's anything that would want to be submitted to us, that it be submitted by April 16th so that when we have our meeting, we can have the opportunity to take this information into consideration for our next meeting, which will take place on April 24th. So if you wish to clarify something, I appreciate it.
Sure, I have an additional question. What we've heard today is a lot about what the current intentions of the tenant are for this property. Currently, 6 to 7 employees, currently about 40 flights a day, currently expecting probably 4:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., but deliveries would be in the morning. What guarantee do we have that it's not going to continue like that for six months, maybe a year, and then increase drastically? And we've lost our opportunity to object to what I consider still to be a change in use, which requires additional oversight by the city? Because if the abutter had not filed this action, no one else in the rest of the neighborhood would have known that this was happening until it was too late. And once you've got the building permit for the commercial kitchen, there's an argument that the zoning issue has been waived. How do we go back and fight that later? Do we have to file a nuisance complaint in Superior or Land Court? No one wants to do that. So I would just say, I would agree that I think it needs a public hearing where more questions need to be answered. Because I hope that if this goes through and it's approved, that what the attorney for Bianco's is saying is accurate. But if it's not, it is a significant decrease in the quality of life for all of us who live on all of these streets behind it. So it needs to be addressed. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Well said. Is there anyone else that, that has anything that wasn't at least clarified by the attorneys? Oh, you, yep, you'll be able to get up, but I'm asking any of the people that could up as a proponents, if there's any other conditional questions from them. Okay, yes.
My only question, and I hear the, the point around the vans that would be delivering, I used to deliver produce, so I've drove those myself. I understand that those would be the vehicles for making the deliveries to the airport. I would be wondering about what vehicles deliver produce or materials to the actual facility.
Would you like to address that right now? And I still cannot believe that there has been no, especially the, I, I can see that people are in fear and were so upset of what went out and they get in on their door, whoever canvassed the neighborhood, shame on them. Because myself seeing that was shocked, saying, what the heck is going in there? This is crazy. Tractor trailers in the schoolyard and, and all of these deliveries? When in fact, they come back with this thing, it's quite shocking. So I believe that the neighborhood really has to understand what's being put in there. And again, there's a lot for us to take in and I appreciate all of the people who have spoken. I hope that some of the questions are being answered as we speak. And, and then if there is any type of proposed decision from the two attorneys after today, I would ask that definitely the decisions be submitted to us by April 16th so we will have time to take that in before the April 24th meeting. So if you could just answer the question and then I will allow the applicant to, to speak again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So what I handed out and I just distributed a few extras that I had there to some, some of the neighbors. We, we created this table so there shows delivery vehicles incoming and delivery vehicles outgoing. So outgoing is the two Ford Transit Connect vans. Incoming, what is anticipated is a small box truck Monday through Friday for fresh produce. And then two general deliveries each week that I'm told by the manager that there's flexibility and they could actually schedule those if there was a time that was better or worse in the community. So what, do we know?
The largest truck that you can get in there is a 10-pound truck. You cannot back a tractor trailer into that.
Angar never backed an 18-wheeler across there.
You cannot fit.
Angar never did that.
You cannot fit a full semi truck.
So I'm not, I'm, I just saw that and, and didn't see it. Angar, Angar used to pull it over with an 18-wheeler there.
Not, not a full 18-wheeler. You can fit up to a truck.
They ripped my wires off. It wasn't a 18-wheeler.
Okay, from what the past, I don't, believe me, this is the Board of Appeals. You want to get into that dissertation? Do it outside. The question was as far as deliveries? The new company, are you confirming that there'd be no 18-wheelers placed on that property? Yes or no?
No.
No, okay. What size truck would there be?
The largest size, it would be a mid-size truck for U.S. Foods or Sisal, U.S. Foods delivery twice a week. Again, you can scale that to the delivery times that work out for the neighborhood. You know, not obviously there are school in or school out. Other than that, like you said, it's five or six deliveries a week, a small food truck.
Okay, thank you. Now, if you want to get back up and just quickly brief.
The counselor who suggested that I'm here for some interest other than my own as a resident, as a 20-year resident.
I, I don't even hit, this isn't.
Has to go on record that, that is false.
It, it's not even on record of what he stated because it's not the Board of Appeals. Has nothing to do with our decisions.
Point of clarification on three items. First of all, the 35 employees that Bianco had there had parking off-street at multiple properties owned by Bianco. He had six cars across the street at 374. He had another three or four on the side of 374. He has multifamily homes on Fairfield that have parking areas. They did not, the 35 employees didn't impact us because they had parking off-street at his other properties for the majority of them. Also, point of clarification, the Transit Connect vehicles, how are they going to, how are they going to load and unload with those loading docks? Look at the plan, they show a large vehicle backing up there. How does a small vehicle load and unload at those existing loading docks? Point of clarification, trash in the temperature-controlled room? I don't see that on the plan. I'm in favor of extending the continuing to April 24th.
Okay, thank you. Again, I would hope that some type of a communication can go out to the community there, maybe through the ward counselor, I believe it's Atthe Ganasso, to resolve some of the questions that have been raised. As far as the attorneys, I respectfully request that any proposed decisions that you have get to us before April 16th so we will have time as a board to take it in, have the city legal counsel, if they, we have questions, be able to answer it, the building department. Because I don't want to come to the 24th meeting and have to say, I'm sorry, we have to continue again because the board members have questions that have to be answered. So I look forward to the opportunity to have this resolved. However, please make sure that any questions and if the two attorneys, the applicant have some decision that can be made, please make sure it gets to us by April 16th. Question comes on continuance.
Mr. Baciulli is absent. Mr. D'Angelo is absent. Mr. Lopes, yes. Mr. Mazzone, yes. Mr. Pelton, yes. Mr. Tucker, yes. This is continued to April 24th.
At what time?
Four o'clock.
It starts at 4:00 p.m. Now, that does not get publicly notified again because it's a continuance of this hearing. So if you have. So if you have neighbors.